It's 3:46. I'll call the Lubbock City Council to order. It's day three of our budget workshops. Before we continue our work in, beginning, I believe, with stormwater, we'll go back and, and this is our, sort of our practice, to go back and answer questions and provide a little bit more information. And I'll turn it over to the city manager, Mr. Atkinson.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. Welcome back. Day three. Got two brief items we'd like to go through first today, kind of, again, stepping backwards and answering questions. The first will be just a slightly more detailed discussion on the outdoor warning system. We've had several questions. I'm going to try to answer a few of those, and certainly more will be available at a later time. Second, significant discussion on street maintenance and the unpaid or the dirt road residential program. We have requested data updates and kind of some new go-forward proposals related to both of those. So with that, no further ado, we'll start on the outdoor warning system. Just a little bit of history. We had some good questions asked from the DIAS. I thought this was more expensive, and that's correct. There was a time that it was. So at least in the records that I'm looking at, this really came forward in 2014 as a recommendation from then a citizens advisory committee, and there were many other charges that committee had, but this was one. You can see on your screen, the estimate at the time was $3.3 million. Not all of that was for the sirens. Roughly $420,000 was to bring onboard two full-time equivalents to construct a storage building, a stack lot, and then various related items like warehousing, inventory, and repair parts, items like that. $2.9 million of the total, so certainly the most, was for the sirens, and at the time it was estimated, and you see the note below, and I think it's important, the layout was estimated. It was not modeled. It did not use any of what they call sound plan or any of the other layout models to do that. And the sirens were budgeted at that moment at about $32,000 each. So I do think there was some contingency or actually future escalation that was built into that, but that is the number that was on the table. Fast forward, I think it's been discussed many times, certainly this council has discussed it at the strategic planning sessions and once in a work session. Seems like a long time ago, but I think it was January this year. So the proposal we've brought forward to you today first is the capital cost of $980,436, and that is for 39 sirens, and they are a little less expensive, $25,000 versus $32,000. But each of these siren modules will have greater coverage, and they have less expensive connectivity in terms of setting them up. We also bring to you in this budget proposal the request for one FTE, not two, one. We have mentioned, and I will remind, that for year two, we will come back for a service truck. This would be the bucket truck so that we can keep them running, and potentially a storage building, but we think that's about $150,000 is all we should be looking for next year. Next slide. So on the right-hand side of the page, that is the modeled layout and the various coverage areas that would be achieved from those 39 sirens. I think I told you Monday, this was not something put together by staff. This is the industry leader in this business who put together that model. So some of the key features that go to that, sound modeled, fewer sirens. What you will get is a system that provides an audible warning signal. These are not for voice communications. They do send out the tones or the siren sound, but you do not speak through them. Each of these is set up for 360-degree coverage. Each will run on AC power, so they will be installed, you know, where we can get a hold of a power line. But they all do have an individual battery backup system that goes with them. Didn't put it on the screen, but what these are, these are 45-foot installs is what you'll typically see. Maybe a few places they can go on existing infrastructure, but they're single pole. They're pretty simple. The industry's come a long way with these. The system that we're going to purchase, or that we would like to purchase, is selective. You can set off the entirety of the system all at once. You can set off defined zones. Those can either be predefined or can be simple through a, through an app. You can draw a circle on your, on your screen and select ones to go off at that moment, and then also individual sirens can be set off. So with that, any questions on the siren system?
Yes. Just a brief question. Rightaways, installments, city rightaways?
City rightaway. Yes, sir.
Okay. Got to answer my question. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chaddis. Okay, that's it. Thanks, Mr. Atkinson, for bringing it to... Mr. Christian, you have a question?
Thank you. Did you do it?
Randy, hit your microphone button, please, sir. You may need to log into the meeting, Randy.
Is that logged in this board? There's somebody that called in.
Okay, go ahead. Go ahead, speak up loudly.
Well, I'd just like to, to walk us through how it's actually activated. Do you activate it? So just kind of, after we got these calls, that's what we, the process of where the sirens actually go off.
Yeah, good. So discussion on when the sirens will sound really starts with what's a qualifying trigger. And at the, at its most simple, it is what we would get from the National Weather Service, so you have imminent danger of a tornado. Or second, an eyewitness report from a trained spotter that is working on our behalf. And we do deploy spotters in severe weather. We have done that for a long time, and we'll continue to do that. Either of those creates, let's call that the eligibility, to set the siren off. The actual push the button will be controlled through emergency management. The system's very flexible. Ideally, something such as this is coming toward the community. They'll already be in the EOC. Should they not be, it can still be set off remotely by a sequence of qualified individuals.
All of course, I mean, Mr. Mayor, and I'm, I'm, say you do, the entire system goes off, and then conditions change. You can go back and recalibrate it or recap so that it go in a different zone, so it has a great deal of flexibility of how it's being used during the process of severe weather.
Absolutely. So the system that I used in my past life functioned pretty much as you described. The first sounding will generally be system-wide sounding. As you learn more, as things get closer, hopefully they go away, but if they do not, then you'll begin setting off zones that are more appropriate to where the threat is.
Thank you.
Mr. Chaddis?
Thank you, Mayor. That brings another question. Okay, this warning system is not, it will not be used strictly for tornadoes. It will be used, let's say there's a chemical spill in a particular area, or there's, it could be other disasters, that's what I guess I'm, what I'm leading to.
It can, yes. The primary function is for tornadoes.
Sure.
Or something approaching a tornadic-level event. We will control the system. As we have other procedures that get put in place, think of an accident that might happen around a rail yard.
That's where I was going.
And there's a release. They can be used really...
Really what you're doing, and again, like we said on Monday, it's an outdoor warning system, so we're trying to catch the attention.
I think, I think your mic went off.
Okay, you're back on?
Okay, thank you. So I'll go back, I guess I was at the rail yard somewhere when that turned off. As we develop those defined protocols, they can be used in case of a hazardous material release, the need for a shelter in place, or alternatively leave, don't, don't be in this area. But it's communicating just through an audible warning signal. Everything will be backed up through Lubbock Alert, through the press, through the traditional media, through our social. These are, these are designed to get attention and say, hey, something is happening, now go find out what's happening.
That's my question. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chaddis. Further questions? Ms. Patterson-Harris.
Thank you. And it may just be, be me, there's a ledger here that talks about the decibel levels. And I'm watching as, in the graph, how the different decibel levels are in between, in the weeds, between a lot of the, the stations, if you will. Talk to me about that. Is there certain levels that you set off, or it just, it just tells you who can hear what, in what areas of the city? Talk to me about that.
Yeah, I'm certainly not the expert at how the, the sound works. This model is developed under a certain condition, certain temperature, humidity, and wind. And in the model, if those conditions are exact, this is where you would hear at different distances from a particular siren, a particular volume. Most of them, if not all, are overlapping everything at the 70-decibel or above level. You'll see some areas, if you can see it, and I know it's small, but like between three and six, between that little island-looking drawing there on, on the blue. When this model was, was initially run, it is based on where homes are. So they have tried to focus it where those loudest levels will be where the homes are, where people are more likely to be. The system is not static. It starts at 39. As different development patterns occur, you know, development moves one way or another, or alternatively, we start bumping up against ETJs such as Wolfherth. So if you see the vertical north-south line, that, that doesn't mean the sirens quit working there. That's the boundary to Wolfherth.
Okay.
But we'll eventually run into that going northwest and north.
Okay. Just wanted, because if you're looking at the system, definitely want to make sure the folks can hear wherever they are.
And just, and again, because of a past life and an experience with the very, very large system that covered most of two counties, we, the city, have to do a tremendous job of setting the expectation of what these are, what they do, when we will use them, and for what purpose. And tell again, from the past, you know, one of, one of the biggest complaints that we would get when we used them, I was in the living room, I was watching the TV, and I never heard it go off. Okay? If you're close enough to it, you probably will. But for the vast majority of the homes, you won't. And, and that is not the purpose of it. In fact, in the modern world, we're, we're not allowed to build a system powerful enough to do that. It is an outdoor warning system. It triggers in the people that hear it to know something is up. Let's go find out what's up. Let's check our other sources, and let's respond appropriately. The joke that went with these is they don't mean run out in the middle of the street and look west. Not the purpose.
Okay. Thank you. Let's move to the next topic. I think you have one more follow-up item.
Yes, we do. Give us just a second. We ended up in two different presentation formats here. Okay, we'll do some follow-up on street maintenance and on the unpaved roads, or what I call the dirt road residential program. Next slide. So question that was raised, a request for data was kind of a more historical run. So 2009 to 2020, here is the mapping of the various pieces of the street maintenance program. Council, we've also provided this to you electronically, and in that format, it's more simple to kind of zoom in and, and get some of that to spread out. But that does represent the various projects, whether those were done in-house. The green ones will be contractor rebuilds, so a more major project. But it does include both concrete and asphalt patching, rejuvenator program, resurfacing, and even in the pink color, where in-house we have rebuilt streets. So, next slide. This one might take us more into the, to the current day, into some of the missteps that we had earlier this week. The 2020 street maintenance program, so this is what's here today. This is not the proposed. This is what was approved last year. So the rejuvenator program, it is finished. $994,000 was expended on that. 114th Street, so this was getting that segment from University to Indiana, and then jumping over and trying to get that corner around Walmart there as you approach Quaker. That project is also finished and opened. The asphalt patching, just under 1.8, that's completed. The concrete patching is underway, and we talked the other day about where that is. The micro-surfacing project, that was the one that we had a bit of delay in getting it approved. It is approved, and the notice to proceed triggered August the 1st. They have 90 days to complete that. $4.3 million will be spent on that. The in-house mill and relay, and so this was specific, Third and Paris, F and 82nd, we did that out of the operating budgets this year. And I think, you know, part of what we're going to see the benefit of is we do have the milling machine that the council purchased for us, and it is helping us go farther and faster. 2020 pavement condition assessment, this is a complete update to the old model we have that helps us do the pavement condition rating. We're evaluating the various proposals that we have in hand for that. 2020 in-house project, this is that Medical District project. 24th Memphis to Indiana is where that starts, and they should be moving the milling machine in that direction as we speak to get that one going, estimated at $500,000. Some repairs at Indiana and 82nd, that one is in the bid phase. Next. So graphically, that table that we've just discussed shows up here on where those projects are being done. Mayor and council, if you've got questions on current or past, this would probably be good, and then we'll jump into the proposed for next year.
Okay, let's go to the mayor pro tem.
Thank you, Mayor. On the Medical District, which I was questioning yesterday, my map shows from 24th all the way to 19th, from Quaker to Indiana, not just Joliet and 24th.
I'm guessing you're looking at a previous map, kind of one that we had, yeah. That was, and of course, we have proposals and prior to, and what we have now. Some of those is really what we're trying to do different so that we're more clear about how we delegate what we're, what we're going to be doing. That's the area that we're doing, so those were really highlighted areas. So we're going to try to get away from just highlighting general areas. Like we talked about with our patching, you see a patching contract up there, it's that whole square mile. Obviously, we're not patching every inch of every street. That's just the area that we're working on. So what we're going to be doing is going through the Medical District, and obviously starting with 24th Street between Memphis and Indiana. And then we'll go through and address, Joliet's another one that obviously we've identified. And we have the, the funding appropriated, about $500,000. We're going to continue through that district, going through, some streets may repair, may require like 24th Street where we mill and relay the entire street. Some streets may only require where we mill just a top two inches down, and we're looking at a surface coat. Other streets might need patching in that area as well. Some areas may just need where we have the drainage improvements and the going across intersections so that those repairs may take place. So it's really just a general area. It's kind of hard to describe that on a, on a map like this, so we're going to be going through that area essentially north of 24th, south of 19th, in the Medical District, doing various projects with our in-house crews.
Okay, so it's more than just Joliet and 24th?
Yes, sir. It's, it's going to be that whole area, and obviously, we will expand our budget that we have for that area.
And I remember that because of, I do remember the change that you had mentioned to us in the Streets Committee about Lake Ridge being taken out.
Correct.
And, and I see that obviously is not on the...
Yeah, prior to last year when...
I'm sorry? I, I just, I did want to notate that, yes, I remember that we took out Lake Ridge.
Yeah. Lake Ridge, at this time last year, you know, we proposed it, we have estimates, those bids came in, and we worked with the contractor. We actually spent some time negotiating with the contractor to negotiate them down prior to award. I think we saved a little over $324,000 negotiating it down, but it did not allow us to do that Lake Ridge area, so that's, and you'll see that, and that'll be in the proposed 2021.
So that picks back up in the...
Yes, sir.
I'm still not, I still don't understand the Medical District. I mean, I, maybe I'm wrong, but I thought that when we said we're coming into an area that all the streets in that area get micro-surfacing or rebuild. Is that not the case?
It, well, this is going to be with our in-house crews, and so the micros...
I really don't, that didn't matter to me.
So, yes, we're going to go...
We have to get, this has to be something that a mayor can understand and a voter can, citizen can understand. So it's got to be simple. And what does that mean?
We're, we will be going through that entire district. It's highlighted on the area, the, the area, and we will be going through and addressing all the, like, I guess, trouble areas, and some streets, the entire streets are troubled streets. Sometimes it's just the, where the drainage crosses a street and, and that needs to be repaired, so all the streets in, in that district will be touched and we'll, we'll have maintenance put on them.
But you still answered my question. I, I'm, I'm thinking about the, the micro-surfacing, we normally we do a neighborhood, you, one year you go in and do your patches, the next year you come in and do the, the micro, that, or what are we calling it?
The micro, yes, yes, sir.
Is that right? Is that what it is?
It's micro, yeah, it's a micro-surfacing. It's a, it's a...
Okay. So is that what we're doing there or not?
No, sir. This is, this is with our in-house crews.
Okay. Well, we need, we need to take this up at a work session because we don't have time for it today, but, but we've got to, we, we need to better understand this because...
Sure.
That's not been what we've said in the past. I mean, and the map doesn't say, the map that we're looking at that showed what we're going to do doesn't say that we're not going to, it says in-house to projects, but it doesn't, to me, that doesn't imply that it doesn't get, where do we decide what gets done in-house and what doesn't? Certainly not based off PCR, because PCR would say these were worse than some that where we are doing work. Understand where I'm coming from?
I, I do, and we...
And I'm also frustrated that the timing of this is very late in the year. I know it's got to get warm, but we've been warm here since, we lived through it this year. Remember how gorgeous it was during early COVID days? We had a freeze last year on October 15th. We got a project that's just kicking off, that they've got 90 days to do, that they're likely going to be still doing it when we have our first freeze. I just don't, I don't get it. The council appropriates the money, we want it spent. We want these, I mean, this, these projects need to raise, they need to rise to the very top.
Mr. Franklin, is there a way to start projects earlier in the spring?
I'm sorry?
Is there a way to start projects earlier in the spring?
We can, and, you know, a lot of these go through, and some of these you have actually awarded back in Janu, I mean, back in February when you start those. So the bid process starts earlier. We get the specs out and we start that in, in the winter months, get those bid out, and we bid them out kind of consecutively so that if one comes in lower, we can increase the next one that goes out to bid, or if the next, if it comes in higher, we can decrease the next one. So we do those in a domino effect, and they do get constructed during, I guess, what we call the asphalt season, when asphalt, that type of material is produced at the batch plants.
So the answer, yes, and we will.
Thank you. Anything else on, on street maintenance?
Like to show the proposed, yes, sir.
You've got some more, another slide. Anything else on the 2020 project, or 1920 projects?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Franklin.
Thank you.
Mr. Atkinson, please continue.
Thank you. Okay. Now we're going to discuss the proposed, so this is what's in the budget that's in front of the council. So the 2021 proposed program sets aside $1 million for the rejuvenator program, $800,000 to mill and relay 50th Street, Upland to Alcove, and recall that the county is doing a project on the other side of Alcove there. Also a mill and relay MLK, 19th to Broadway. The micro-surfacing picks back up in Lake Ridge, so the one that fell out for the current year. $3 million to be split between the concrete and the asphalt patching program. And then under Brick Streets, they've been able to move some of this around, and for $700,000, we think we can fix the canyon there at 13th and Texas. So when I came to you Monday, I talked about, let's step back and do the study. Six drainage inlets, you know, all within a half-block and so forth. Mike Keenum and his team have been looking at that, and we think we can get that lifted back up, use the existing inlets, and kind of do a one-and-done and be out of 13th and Texas. So the next slide will be the map. So on that, you see the lime-green colors for your two major rebuilt streets, 50th and Martin Luther King. Various other color codes that pick up the concrete patching, asphalt and concrete patching, rejuvenator, et cetera. Mayor pro tem, you see Lake Ridge coming back up on this year.
Questions on the proposed? Questions about 21. I have a, I have a suggestion. Mr. Atkinson, I'd like you to maybe come back to us in, oh, February, maybe February, March, and let's sort of see where we are. I know we're, we're, we're squirreling away some general fund dollars this year because we don't really know what COVID-19 looks like for us going forward. I think it's, I really, I think it's a really smart move on, on you and your team's part, but if we get to March and we realize that, that we're in good shape, I think the council might be interested in you guys bringing us a proposal on how we might use some of that money to supplement street maintenance and maybe even some dirt road paving. I think it's something that we could, we could, you could probably find some support here for, okay?
So if we could, if we could target March...
I represent Ms. Joy with that also, because she and I had a chance to talk about that today, and she's been called away, but I know she, she feels the same way about that.
Absolutely. Be glad to do that. We'll target early March. We'll have those first sets of numbers coming in. Selfishly, it gives me one more month of report from the controller as well. Be glad to do that.
That'd be fine. Mr. Griffith?
And I understand we're, this is, we're, we're here to adopt this current budget, and to the mayor's point about a reset, a relook at where we're at. And hopefully, things will be well. Mr. Costelitz?
Hope so.
And I, I second the mayor on this. I think it's very good business for us to be able to take, if, if things are better, and we have that funding mechanism still available, I truly agree with the mayor that we should reconsider what we're doing here in street maintenance and the amount we're putting into street maintenance. Obviously, it'd be a budget amendment.
Okay, Mr. Atkinson, please, you want, you want to comment on this, or you want to go to the next one?
Yeah, just, next one, and I'll probably comment after that.
Okay. Let's go to the next, to your, to your dirt streets, Mr., I think that's your next...
That is correct.
Unpaved road projects.
So go one more?
There you go.
Okay, so council, recall, the proposal is $800,000 general fund cash to be used for the unpaved road program this year. What you see in front of you represents that $800,000. These are the same projects with a slight exception that we looked at Monday. They're just called out in greater detail of where we can see them. The change is actually the one on the bottom left. We had come to you with 74th and 76th down in that neighborhood, worked with the council member. We are doing, as we speak, we are finishing up F, so just immediately to the west of D. It was suggested that we go ahead and finish off D. It's got some paving at different spots, but let's just go ahead and get that one. So 76th is off, D is on. The remainder, if you go, stay on the bottom, go to the bottom right, that's East 13th Street, obviously between June and Keel, and there is actually development going on down in that, in that stretch. Coming up to the top right, you see North Avenue Q. This one is quite a highly requested one. Council member does a good job advocating for it, and we've also put Grinnell Street on there. And if you might, let me show you the next slide because they're going to kind of tie together just a little bit for discussion purposes. So working with Ms. Murphy and Mr. Howerton, we expect, we're not budgeting for it at the moment, but we expect $500,000 can come available through the Community Development Fund. Possibly a little more, but I'm going to start with 500. And the reason for that, with CD getting so... And the reason for that, with CD getting so many additional dollars added to programs that we otherwise would have spent the base on, all these dollars coming in through CRF and et cetera, that's gonna free that up. So, if that 500,000 comes through, we're gonna make these three proposals. Top right, you've got North Tulip from East Rice to East Ursulon. Bottom right, 76th, Ash to Cedar. So that's putting that stretch that we swapped out in that neighborhood back. There's some development going on there as well. And then on the bottom left, 22nd Urbana to Upland, and then you can see the representation of where those streets are. Now, it's CDBG dollars. There are certain qualifiers as to which street the dollar can be spent on, so the dollar you saw on the first page might be applied to a street on this page and vice versa. We will absolutely spend those dollars appropriately. But presuming those dollars do come through and are awarded through the council, you've got these ads right here. If 700 comes through, you'll pick up another one. Okay? So with that, I'll stop and take your comments and advice on the unpaved program.
Just want to say, I love it when a great plan comes together. I do. Mr. Howerton out there, appreciate you as we, it just excites me every time we do, we push a little bit further to do what we can to make things well for the citizens in our communities. And I think that's what we do. I think that's, every time we show up, our mind needs to be churning in that direction. And I appreciate it, even with the tight budget this year. I, I do, I want to say a huge thank you for still moving forward and getting some things done. I, I, as I drive the district so often, a, as I do, people get really excited, because I think it's important that we make sure that citizens find their way in and out of their communities well. So I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Mr. Chaddis?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a brief comment. North Avenue Q. Long-term, it's been a need, especially when it starts, well, all our streets for that matter, that are dirt, unpaved. Anytime it rains, I would dread living on that block when rain does come in. I think the neighbors are gonna be very happy with the direction we're going.
Hope so.
Yes, definitely. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chaddis. Okay, council, further comments? Mr. Griffith?
I would like to comment on rework, and I applaud, Mr. Franklin, thank you for your efforts on this too. Thank you for getting involved on the Brick Street repair.
Okay, council, if there's nothing else, I think that completes your follow-up items, is that right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So we'll go back to, um, Budget Presentation 3, and we're on page 16, I believe. That's where Stormwater begins, is that right, Mr. Kostic?
Yes, sir.
All right, Mr. Atkinson?
Okay, we're moving quick, so we'll jump right to page 17. There we go. Stormwater. Look at the waterfall chart here, and we're gonna talk about the revenues. Revenues are increasing slightly, that's really growth in the system and the maintenance of the rate structure. We are, current year, having excess reserves that are being used, that are not being carried forward into the next year. And I'll get into some more detail when we look at expenses and when we look at capital. So you'll see that. You see that slight increase reflected on the left in the stormwater fees, and you see the, the deduct that comes out from not using the excess reserves. Next page. These are our expenses. Overall, the fund is going to come in slightly down. Comp and benefits will be flat, primarily due to staff turnover, but it's offset by some health premium and workers' compensation increases. Debt service in this fund continues to decrease. Street maintenance debt decreased by 1.1 million, and FY '22 will be the final year, the final of the tranches that pay off the street maintenance program. There is an increase in transfers to the other funds, and that's based on the use of cash to fund the capital projects. Move down to the fund model. Top of the page, you have your revenues. Middle of the page, you have your expenditures. We have the over/under that you see come in, and then at the bottom, we have the reserve policy. So of course, interest revenues are down, expected, that carries across all funds that have balances. Very slight increase in general consumer meter, that's the fancy word for the stormwater bill, and of course, a nominal revenue from various department operations. Salaries/benefits carry on down the page. The pay-as-you-go funding in CIP is where you will notice the largest differential. So current year is about 3.5 million. We're proposing about 11.4, but again, cash. The debt service, you see the current year at 10.8. You see then the carryover in the future, and that continues to decline. We do have this one more year of transfer into the debt service fund. And then also on the, almost the bottom line of this group, starting in the current year, the vehicle and equipment debt at 307,000, and you see as that triggers its way and disappears in the near future.
So, Mr. Atkinson, are those mislabeled, the columns? Because what you're calling current year is actually-
Oh, I'm, I was presenting FY '22, Mayor.
Okay.
My apologies.
Okay.
Take everything I said and move it to the left. I'll start over.
So the green, the green lines are for the proposed new year, correct?
That is, that is correct.
Just wanted to make sure.
I need to put my glasses on or get my glasses checked, one of the two. Let me go down to page you-go funding in CIP. It's 3.4, almost 3.5 for the proposed year. It's 11.4 the following year, but still all in cash. So, and then you, again, all of the good news on the debt's gonna happen one year quicker, the way I said that. Okay? Move down to the, to the fund balances. This fund does carry a 20% reserve policy. So, we're sitting at 12.9, fund reserve requirement of about 4.7, taking your excess reserves of about 8. Now, we brought the, we brought the stormwater tier-one rate down by $1.50 in the current year. At the time, I indicated we'd continue to step that down by smaller numbers, but continue to step it down. Staff presented in January the fund models, and we have taken everything the council said in, into account. We can continue this as a cash-only, no new debt, at least knowing what we know today, but knowing what we know today, not new debt. But to do that, we need to hold at the $7.30 for one year. We do project tripping back into those 15-cent step downs for the following year.
My recollection is that's what council suggested, that we want to try to cash-fund it, and if, you know, we'd hate to go lower the fees down to such a rate that we'd have to issue debt. We'd rather, we'd rather do it in ca, if we can, we'd rather do it in cash.
And you'll, you'll see a proposal to do just that.
Council, any questions on that?
Say, actually, even with that, there's still some good on both sides of that, being able to do things with cash, but still looking at the rate, being at a decent space, is my deal.
So with, with that in mind, before we leave the fund model, the piece at the very bottom, converting this to all cash and assuming the major projects that we think are out there make, and they may not, or they may make later in time than what we've estimated. I won't say we've given ourselves the worst-case model, but we've pulled it in pretty tight. So let's look at excess reserves. You'll see that we're coming through the end of the year at 8.2 million. We are using those in '22, so not the proposed budget, but the year out. And you see our excess reserves come down. The following year, we're gonna dip negative, if the model holds exact, but very slightly, with a very rapid recovery. Now, of course, we don't know what developer-driven type capital projects will come three, four, five years out, so I would suggest it probably won't really build back up to that level that quick, but it does indicate a future ability to maintain cash funding.
Okay, questions on the, the fund, at the fund level or the model level before we go to, to Stormwater Capital? Okay, let's go to page 20, Mr. Atkinson.
Page 20, your proposed Stormwater Capital. So the, the first project is the completion of the updated Stormwater Master Plan, $250,000, that is in cash. Come down to 8628, we're asking for $175,000, and that supports the digital orthophotography, sometimes known as aerial pictures, stuff that makes Google Earth work, but ours is much more detailed. Come on down to 92518, Stormwater System Improvements, that one, and the one following it, Stormwater Rehab and Maintenance, 150 for the first, 500 for the second. That's the care and feeding of your Stormwater System. That, that is our intent as we move it over into a maintenance rather than a debt service type fund. So, keeps us moving. And you'll see those continue out over time. Big projects that are sitting out there, 92654 is Upland Avenue and 66th Street Playa Drainage Improvement. So this is where Upland is north and south. We have the Marsha Sharp to the south. Immediately above that, we have the Railroad Track. There is an old, and an old because it was granted many, many years ago, there's an old, large drainage easement in there. That drainage easement has not worked in quite some time, has some real challenges. It's an interesting area. We're gonna be doing the big Upland project in partnership with MPO. We've got a playa to the west. All this water, though, is supposed to end up back around the Water Rampage area before it flows into McAllister, and it doesn't flow that way right now. It's supposed to, but it's not. So, we're coming in and looking to take the next step at the design at the right-of-way. There may be acquisition that needs to be cleared on that project. I do wish to set the stage that I think there's going to be lots of challenges with individual parcels of property as we go forward on that. If we can clear them over the course of this next budget, we will, and we'll move towards construction. If we're unable to clear them, we'll keep working until we can, before we look at the construction dollars. Okay? Councilman?
Mr. Christian?
Has, has any of that process about clearing with those property owners, has that begun? Has that started yet? Or, and let me, a follow-up question, that, this will also integrate with the expansion of Upland to the north. There will be some, it'll inter, interchange or interact with what's gonna be going on that, that expansion as well.
They're directly related. The MPO part of the project is gonna move the water across Upland for us. But that's gonna put it right back to where we're having, and I guess maybe historically have had for a long time, the challenges with getting that water to basically flow back up the railroad track. And I don't expect, they, they could. I don't expect there will be, though. That's, easement is actually above that.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Christian. Mr. Chaddis?
Thank you, Mayor. If we can back up to 8638?
Yes.
Canyon Playa Lake Restoration and Restudy?
Yes.
What are we talking about?
Gonna have to let Mike speak to that. Mr. Keenum?
The one that we've got the money for already appropriated, part of that is Higginbotham and excavating that, that lake to overexcavate that, helping with part of the drainage system over there in that area.
That answers my question. Thank you.
Mayor Protem? Thank you, Mr. Keenum, for that answer, which brings up a question. On that Higginbotham, I know Ms. Joy's not here, and she, she would ask this question about the completion of that project.
I believe we just awarded that construction contract at the previous council meeting for that Phase 3 of the drainage project, and so that will be a piece as well. We will do pre-construction meetings, meet with the neighborhood before we start construction in that area, because there's a line that's projected to go down 17th Street in that neighborhood. So we know that's gonna be a challenge.
Okay. But you're planning to meet with the neighborhood, obviously?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. I, I know that was a concern that she had.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Keenum. Mr. Atkinson, let's go to page 21.
Okay, we'll step out of Stormwater, jump into Lake Allen Henry, which still remains very full, still remains very busy. Okay. You see on here your revenue sheet? We've had an extremely, extremely busy year, basically since Memorial Day. Lake Allen Henry has operated at Fourth of July levels. It might trend down just a little here and there, but it seems to be ma, seems to be if we're down a hair on the weekend, it's made up during the week. There's just a tremendous amount of traffic. Council would also note, due to that, in an effort to keep everybody safe, on the weekends, really, we start on Friday, we're running both the police marine unit and the fireboats out of that Lake Allen Henry. It's just busy. So, the line item that is labeled entrance fees, you see in the forecast for the current year, the 1920, I'll stay within the right color this time. We estimate that to go up to 380,000 from 221 in the prior year. We do think it will go down next year, but still remain above the prior historical averages. It's busy. Had a chance this weekend to go to one of our local businesses that sells boats. They sold more boats in a month than they typically sell through the entire summer. Just amazing.
Does this have anything to do with Mr. Mr. Councilman Massengill buying a new boat? Is there a connection in this, do you think?
It's, it's quite likely. Mayor, I think there are videos.
Yeah, okay. Just checking.
Trucks going down the ramp, I, I don't know what I've been told.
Yeah, well, Chief, we know the chief is paying very close attention to this, yeah.
So, I'll go back to the topic at hand. We have had very, very high demand. That did increase the present year's forecast. We see it come down next year, but really still remain above where we've been historically. If you get on 1585 on Friday evening or Saturday morning, it's a parade. Everybody headed out. So, it's good to see. It really is good to see. So let's go to expense for Lake Allen Henry. You do see an increase in compensation and benefits. Some of that is terminal pay, overtime for LPD, and the health premium increases. We've increased the maintenance budget a little bit, based on the historical motor-vehicle repair costs. So we have the vehicles that the city staff members use down there, and we also provide the vehicle for the Lake Patrol that is provided by the County Sheriff's Department. So all of those are our responsibility to take care of. Scheduled charges are up slightly for property and for liability insurance. We have no proposed capital for FY '21, 21. Questions?
Mr. Massengill?
Might watch that. If the demand stays up, you're gonna need some capital for a parking lot.
Capital for parking lot, and we are evaluating the long-term potential of a second boat ramp.
Yeah. Are they parked all the way out, the road, all the way to the checkout?
Yeah, we, we need to find a way to, to spread that out. Of course, one of the unique features, that's the city's lake, and certainly the water in the lake is the city. Very little of the shoreline is the city. It's, it's a pretty unique, pretty unique structure.
Is there any annual events out there that, that, at the, at the lake?
The only one I'm aware of is there has been an annual triathlon out there. I'm not sure if that will occur this year, there's been some discussion, but, you know, there's a lot of fishing events out there, Councilman.
I knew there used to be a bass tournament years ago. I just hadn't heard anything about it.
I believe those tournaments still exist. Lake Allen Henry's become one of the best bass lakes in the state of Texas.
Sure. That's the reason I was asking. That used to be quite a, quite an event, that bass tournament, and I just hadn't heard anything about it in quite a few years.
Actually, one of the fishing tournaments went off the first- Actually, one of the fishing tournaments went off the first week of the COVID.
Oh, really? Okay.
Any more discussion or questions on Lake Allen Henry? Mr. Atkinson?
Thank you, Mayor. We'll, let's jump into the Lubbock-Preston Smith International Airport. So, obviously, counsel's well aware of all the changes that have occurred in the travel world, hospitality, tourism, but if you want to look at the two city departments that have been the most impacted, it's going to be the airport and it's going to be the Civic Center. Okay? So we'll talk about airport today. Our departmental operations will stay flat. It's due to an increase in the landing revenue, but declining terminal and parking revenues. And if you have a chance to be out near the airport, drive around those parking lots. Be really surprised what's not out there. The airport, however, did receive a very generous grant through the CARES Act. The federal government recognizes what could potentially happen to our air transportation system if we don't keep these airports funded and functional. So Lubbock-Preston Smith did receive that. We are proposing to spend a portion of that in '20, current year, but most of it really will be spent in this proposed budget. So the PFC capital transfer, PFC being passenger facility charge, that's the add-on on the airplane ticket, that has gone down by about $700,000. All the spending is, of course, on the terminal project out there currently. Ms. Campbell provided us some great photographs of that. We have excess reserves of $543,020 that are not going to be needed in '21, and that's because of taking advantage of those CARES Act dollars and preserving and saving the local dollar. So all in, you see the revenue moving from 15.9 to 20.1, and that delta is really the CARES Act dollars. Next. So on expenses, compensation and benefits here did go up. Major portion of that is a certification pay program for your airport police department. Your airport police department out there has a relatively new commander. That gentleman has done phenomenal work with that department. He continues to build the skill, the professionalism, and the succession planning out there, and certainly request your consideration of that. Also at the airport, same as other city employees, increases in the health premiums and the workers' compensation. MNO, maintenance and operations, down, $222,000. That's reduction in the cost of the management agreement for our parking concessionaire. That reduction in expense is not really a good thing, because that means we don't have the parkers. Capital transfer will go down, $525,000. Again, that's the reduction in the PFC capital expense. We do have an increase, nearly $175,000, for three cash-funded projects that we're bringing forward. Okay. Moving on to page 27. Top line will be your revenues. Below that will be the expenditures. You see at the top, slightly declining interest, we've discussed that. You see the CARES Act funding in total of $7.1 million proposed. Carry that down to revenues made at the landing area, the hangar area, the terminal area, parking area, industrial, and on down. Those, when you get down into the industrial area, the agricultural and rent, those, of course, are making use of all the land that the airport owns. Not all aviation-related necessarily, but largely. Come down into the expenditure budget, you see the bottom line on that, we're budgeting 15.2 in expenditures with 20.1 in revenue. So about a $5 million variance to the favor of the airport, but that is the CARES Act dollars. Capital. First project is 8616. That is the terminal apron maintenance, proposed at $2.4 million. Two million of that will be grant funding, and basically, we're taking the local match and paying that with the CARES Act dollar. And that is an eligible use therein. General property improvements of 300, cash. Pavement maintenance, 200, that's in cash. And then roof repair and replacement, 774, also in cash.
Any comments or questions, counsel?
So look at the airport proposed fee changes on page 29, beginning on page 29. You see that by far and away, those are staying flat with a couple of minor expenses, or minor changes, mainly decreases. So the office space rentals per square foot per month going down from 3133 to 2662, just under a $5 change. Rental car parking from each rental agency goes up by $1, and I believe that's a contractual agreement, Ms. Campbell, that changes that?
Yes.
You see that landing fees will go down by one penny, one penny per 1,000 pounds. Page 30. No change therein. Questions on the airport?
Mr. Griffith?
Thank you, Mayor. On the terminal remodel, was the roof replacement not in that budget?
It, Ms. Campbell, if you'll come up, it is. These are the many other roofs that we owned.
Oh, we have a lot of roofs out there.
Yes, sir. That's.
The other roofs, okay.
There's a string of buildings on the east side, as well as the west, that are in various states of need.
Some of those are pretty aged, aren't they?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Campbell. I just want clarification on that.
Yeah. Not the terminal building, others.
Okay.
Terminal building roof is new.
Okay, other questions on the airport? Okay, let's move to transit. Page 32.
Transit will come in as another program. It was definitely impacted as we've gone through the pandemic, but it also did receive its own CARES allocation, straight into there. So the transfer from the city will be reduced. It will be reduced from the roughly 3.2 down to the 1.6 million, and that's because of using the CARES Act dollars to come in. So 50% reduction in the general funds contribution to maintaining transit. Mr. Mandrell has done a great job increasing the ticket and freight agent revenues. He has been able to get our outside partner now to cover the costs they should be covering related to us handling their events after hours. So I want to thank Chris for doing that. Do predict kind of a continued falloff in advertising revenues, truing those up. Slide adjustment to the starting compensation for the drivers. I'm trying to find them and to keep them. The benefit cost increase is compensation adjustments for those drivers largely and for healthcare. Now recall, they're not, city bus is not on the city's healthcare system. Questions on the transit budget?
Please continue.
Okay. We'll move to the cemetery. First page on your funding sources. The lot sales are projected to go up slightly, and that's using the actuals compared to the budgets. Our graveside services are decreased, and that's just historical, that's what's going on in the market. And there is an increase in the transfer from the general fund. So the line item is transfer from other funds. And in your current budget year, it's 354, and it's projected to go up to 416, proposed budget year. Flip over to expense. Page 35. Very slight increase in comp and benefits, projected terminal pay and the increase in health premiums. There is a bit of a decrease in the maintenance. We had brought that up. We can now true it back down. The debt service at the cemetery, and it did have its own debt service, the debt service is decreasing due to paying off the debt and moving things off of the master lease onto the tax note for the ones that are remaining. We've not purchased or added to that at the cemetery. We're still working out of what was there. Questions of the cemetery? Questions regarding the cemetery? Move over into the civic centers. Look at civic center revenues. And I'm going to draw your attention, three lines down. These are the general rental revenues that come into the civic center over the course of the year. So if we go back to 1819, 521,000. Our best estimate at the moment is 367,000 for the current year. We're projecting it to come back up, but not back up to where we were in FY 18. So we think we'll stay a little below that line. We hope we bust that and go right above it. Transfer from the hot fund, we hope will start coming back, get the revenue in, and then we will have this year a transfer from the general fund. So counsel, recall back when we did the 1718 budget. That year, the civic center was able to take itself entirely to an earned income and hot revenue program. And really, that's, we're going to get it back there. We just may need a year or two to do that. So I am pleased that in the year prior to us making that budgetary change, the general fund was carrying the civic center to the tune of over 660,000. With the bad year that we've had this year, still think we can get them covered with only 310 next year. So we're still below what we were doing historically, but it is our strong preference that this goes back to carrying itself on earned revenue and the hot fund. Question?
Mr. Christian, do you have a question?
Yeah, I just had a question of, have they started seeing any inquiries about events beginning sometime in the next year already? Do you have any at all, any possibilities yet?
So the fascinating but somewhat disappointing thing is we're seeing interest today, tomorrow, and next weekend. Lisa and her team is doing a good job of booking events. Most of them are smaller, not all. The Gun Show went off, the Gun and Knife Show went off here recently very well. But what we're finding is a lot of these events book. We accommodate the fact that they might need more space than they typically would to set up and be safe. We don't charge extra to do that. We're not charging them for that. And then most of the events are canceling right before they happen. Just having a large number of them doing that. We do know that done correctly, events can be held safely. We're really looking forward to getting back to that.
Thanks.
Let's flip over to expense then. The, there's a small decrease in compensation, that's really the temporary employee cost. Not going to need that. Benefits are up because of the health premiums. We are continuing, though, to put more and more money into maintenance. Again, Ms. Thomason and her team have really shined the place up. They fixed a lot of those little things here and there that you just don't normally get around to. They're going to keep doing that. We do have the scheduled charges up here, and that is really because of an increase in the property insurance. There's a lot of square footage over there. And then our fund level expense is down, and that's really to not planning any capital for '21, because we have been doing the capital out of earned income and hot dollars. This one's tight. It is really tight.
Mr. Christian, do you have another question?
No, I don't know why it came up. I do not. Thank you.
Okay. Further questions on civic center? Okay. Let's, let's take a quick five-minute break, real quick, five minutes, and we'll finish component units right after that. Okay? Thanks. Counsel chambers are come to order. All righty. We'll move now to component units. These begin on page 39. And I believe it begins with economic development. Oh, and there he is.
Evening, Mayor.
The masked economic developer, John Osborne himself. John, we're glad you're here. Take us through LITA and Market Lubbock, please, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you all very much. As has been the history between our two organizations, we rely on the projections of, from the Finance Department over at City Hall, to tell us what our sales tax revenues are going to look like in LITA. And so those two numbers are a function of the numbers coming from, the increase in sales taxes is just reflective of what has been projected by the Finance Department. We do have, slipping briefly into our expenses, then coming back to the revenues, I think it'll make a little better sense. We actually have a number of capital outlay projects that we have planned. We have one in Railport, which is north of the airport. That's called North Ivory Avenue. We have one in the Business Park that's also Ivory Avenue, Business Park being south of the airport. We have another one in Railport called Ash Avenue. And then we have, we have a belief that we may have to do Vassar Street also in the Business Park. So as a result of those, we've got two reimbursement revenues that affect our revenues. One is from the Lubbock Business Park TIF, and that's the bulk of those funds of the increase. The second increase is a reimbursable grant through the Economic Development Administration. It's a federal program that reimburses expenses up to 50%, up to a certain dollar amount, and that's where the additional, it says INT/other, that's where that other, those other funds are, is from the EDA grant. So those are the major increases in the revenue side, plus the fact that we need to use just a little bit of reserve dollars to get us to our total budget. On the expense side, obviously, the bulk of our projects are going to be spent, or the bulk of our increase in expenses is related to those infrastructure improvement projects. And we've got about $10.8 million worth of infrastructure improvements that we need to do for these companies that have been making announcements over the course of the last year. We do also have, as part of this, in our special projects, even though that line item has decreased, I just want to point out that we made our first payment to South Plains College to come to downtown Lubbock to take over the former City Hall. Our second payment will be due in this next fiscal year. We'll make that, and that will be of the roughly $5.8 million in that line item. $5 million of that goes for that particular project. The remaining $855,000 is for workforce-related projects. Be glad to answer any questions on that.
Questions from Mr. Osborne? John, would you continue?
And Market Lubbock, again, we receive our sales, or property tax dollars that come to us from the Finance Department, so those numbers are reflected there. You'll see that we are actually having a much smaller budget this year, and we're using less excess revenue, reserve, excuse me, excess revenues in our reserves, and that's primarily. And that's primarily because we have finished our Burl Huffman Athletic Complex investment. And the soccer fields are now open and functional. And that was the bulk of what the use of those funds were for this last year.
Please continue, Mr. Osborne.
In Visit Lubbock, this has been, obviously, a very challenging year for Visit Lubbock and our tourism partners in our community. And it's been probably, I would imagine, one of the toughest things to project for this next upcoming year. We did get a bit of good news that this last week, we did hit over sixty percent in total occupancy. Now, if we can start doing that more consistently, we'll get back to even. But we had a lot of sporting groups that were in town. And obviously, the more of those groups that we have, the better it is for our community to bring these excess dollars in. From a budgetary standpoint, the funds that we were told that we would have available to us are listed there. The, therefore, while not taking us to the exact same budget that we had last year, we do feel like we've got to budget some excess reserves in order to have a budget that would allow us to start promoting and marketing our community at the appropriate time to encourage groups to come and visit us.
All right, please continue.
The Sports Authority is also just basically a function of everything going on with Visit Lubbock as well. The Visit Lubbock dollars, actually, many of those flow into the Sports Authority to help make it whole. And so you'll see the graphs and charts there. But in the whole scheme of things, we do think that sporting events are going to be coming back quicker than any of the other tourism-related activities. We do think that we've got some event trust fund events that could happen. It's been a pretty big challenge for us to project the state's funds that might come to us as a result of that. And so you'll see that there's a huge decrease in that line item. Specifically, even though we think we will get them, our concern is what happens if we don't hold the event or the participants are not allowed to come or some COVID-related thing, and then the state ends up doing something different related to those funds. We decided it'd be better not to project those. So we also are having to budget reserves in this category as well.
Please continue, Mr. Osborne.
I believe those are the main ones that, unless you want me to go ahead and do stormwater or something like that for you? Yeah, okay, all right.
We'll see what, we'll see while you paid attention, why don't we ask you some questions about stormwater?
Yes, sir. I'd like to be off the hussy now.
Okay. We, me and you have seen a preview of this in your board meetings, and so it's not completely a surprise. I think we're thankful for your willingness to adjust, you know, like everyone else. It's, we find ourselves in an unusual spot, and we do expect things to get better. But for the meantime, we have to make the adjustments, and I know you and your team are able to do that.
Yes, sir. And we appreciate the confidence that you have in us. We did, we were able to commit some, to some projects this year that we would be doing some infrastructure projects for them in this coming twelve months. And then we want to make sure that we've positioned our community to market it in a positive manner to benefit us both our business and industry as well as our potential visitors coming to town at the appropriate time and obviously in a very safe manner.
All right, council, it's your last shot at Osborne. Okay. You better get out of here while you can.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. Appreciate you.
We appreciate you.
Thanks, Jerry.
All right, let's move to Civic Lubbock Inc. It's on page forty-four.
Mayor, Ms. Vicki Key's going to come up and help us with that.
I saw Ms. Key walk in back there. I felt like she might be here for a special presentation.
Hello.
Hi, Vicki.
How are y'all? What you'll see there is the Civic Lubbock budget, both the revised budget that we did this year. We felt it was important to do that since there are quite a bit of loss of revenues with no events in the civic center for the last several months to speak of. And then what we did on the proposed budget is we, since this was done in April, we had no idea how long all of this was going to last. So we tried to just do it conservatively, but still with the hope that we had events next year because all of our revenues are really based on the events that are booked in the civic center, the shows that are at the arena as far as select a seat goes. So we are going to have to dip into our reserves a little bit this year, but it's nothing that we've not ever done before. In our sixty-four years, we've had ups and downs throughout the years, but we've always managed to sustain a good financial footing for Civic Lubbock. Let's see, what else? We were able to do some, we have a local grant program that we fund from our revenues that we were able to grant out some money next year. We use the monies earned in prior years to fund that program so that we're not trying to cover that in the current year. And so all of the revenues that we generate go to fund the corporation. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Key. Questions about Civic Lubbock, Inc.? Thank you. Thanks for what you do.
Thank you.
Those grants that you'll be able to give next year will probably be appreciated more next year than they've been appreciated in a long, long time.
And this, again, this is our funds. We also have a cultural art grant program, which is funded through hotel occupancy tax, which this budget is strictly the corporation's budget.
Got you. Okay. Thank you. Okay. Next are special revenue funds. Mr. Atkinson, how do you want to go through this one?
Mayor, if you'd like, would like to highlight a few of the items on the revenue and the expense, and then maybe some selected items as the council goes through the pages and stop me with any questions.
Okay. That sounds like a good plan.
Okay. So we'll be on page forty-six. Slide that's up on the screen. One that we really like to see because it shows the health of your community, and it really shows how a public improvement district, a PID, can work. So Bell Farms, council is aware, is about to enter its third year as a public improvement district. And you see the three-year run on its revenues from thirty thousand to sixty-three thousand, projected to go to a hundred and thirty-two thousand. These are not taxes. These are the assessments that are collected on the homeowners. And this is that community out there, that neighborhood, developing at a very rapid pace and following the plans just as they were laid out and presented to the council when you were asked to consider that budget. So it's working well. Next would be Central Business District TIF. You see the current year at one point three five, nearly one point four. Projected to go up to one point seven seven. I'm going to go back over into a detailed sheet in a minute and show you where that is. That is not all the increase in the tax increment. That rather is the use of reserve. Move down to the hotel occupancy tax. Draw your attention to the FY nineteen line or column. FY nineteen, the hot tax collection, the local piece, was seven point eight five million. We think that's going to come in at about five point four this year and a very flat recovery into next year as well, five point six. So that's directly related to what you saw with your civic center budget earlier. Belubok Business Park TIF bears a bit of explanation, really more in the current year than the proposed. That TIF shows three point two million, almost three point three million this year. That is those capital dollars coming in from the issuance to support the projects that Mr. Osborne talked to you about. This is not coming out of city dollars. The Business Park TIF was created to fund those infrastructure improvements, and it's doing what it was designed to do. But that is why next year, the revenue is only seven hundred and one thousand. That's the real revenue. You see the increase this year for those capital dollars. The North and East Lubbock Neighborhood and Infrastructure Fund, these, of course, are the royalty revenues, as we heard on Monday. These are all now dedicated to that program. Counsel, I am going to, it's not as part of the budget, but just as part of the operations of that particular fund, going to suggest when we kick those applications off in October this year that we take the available funds that are going forward, divide them between the two eligible districts, North and East, one and two, divide those fifty-fifty and hold those out as allocations. As we go through the applications, if one or the other district does not have enough applications to use that allocation, slide the remainder back over. So that is the staff's intent to do on that one. Other than that, there's really no shocking changes that you're seeing come in on the revenue. Of course, your expense numbers are all going to carry through and largely balance, not exactly, but largely balance. You again see the hot tax, so you know that we're planning on the five point six, not the historical seven and a half-plus million dollars that would go through there. You go over to the TIF business model, which is on...
Let's pause there for just a sec. Any questions on the special revenue funds or both revenue or expenses in high level? Okay, please continue, Mr. Atkinson.
Thank you, Mayor. We'll go to page forty-eight, Central Business District TIF model. This model does not appear to be balanced, even though it was on the revenue and the expense pages. We dropped a line item for those excess reserves that are being used. So we will bring you a new page that goes back and makes this model match. Central Business District TIF is proposing a few capital projects. Those are on page forty-nine. All the proposed projects are using their cash. So some future public improvements at a hundred and fifty. I think possibly of really high interest to us today. If you look at twenty twenty zero eighty-three and twenty twenty zero eighty-six, being the parking master plan and the historic district designation, those are outputs from your new downtown master plan. Those are high on the list to get done, and you see the TIF stepping up to do that. Hundred thousand dollars in the first, two hundred in the second, and of course, cash. The one that's in the middle of those, twenty twenty zero eighty-four, Convention Center Hotel, that hundred and six, five thousand cash money, that is the step one, the phase one, that would be in the development agreement that we reviewed some number of months ago. If that development agreement does not trigger, those dollars will not be spent at this time. I think it's prudent to set those out and have them available, though, should that project re-energize. Mayor and council, questions on Central Business District TIF? If not, we'll switch over to Community Development, the HUD, Housing and Urban Development Grants. Line one's a bit of good news. It's not a huge jump, but you see our entitlement dollars are coming up just slightly, two point oh eight seven to two point one one two there, so that's good. You see in the current year, the one point two million that has already been appropriated for the COVID-nineteen funding. We don't expect to get that in the following year, and I'm not sure we won't get some more this year, though. So that's good. But you'll see CDBG tripling back down to match its historical averages. Slight reduction in compensation, same thing with benefits. Really, on the expense side, the department-level expense, it's all really good. Now, remember that those are constrained. When you take those HUD entitlement dollars, you have formulas that you can use as you go forward to do that. Staying in the nineteen twenty column, right before you get to the colored lines at the bottom, you do see where we have programmed to use all of the CDBG COVID dollars that have been provided to us. So new budget of two point six, year-ago budget of two point eight. This year's the anomaly, but that anomaly is in the COVID funding. Go to the, go to the next page. Next page is home, home program, home funding. You see, again, just a slight increase in the entitlement dollars. Those are the formula dollars that come to Lubbock. Program income is a little different this year, but we're really going back more to the normal number there. But you see the two COVID-nineteen grants that we've received in the current year. You see them on the bottom also as we go through here. Affordable housing development, it's up this year. Some of that, of course, is for our grant dollars. We've got the COVID programming in there. Carry it on down to the bottom of the page. The proposed budget will be one eighty-three, three eighty-six compared to, and I'm using nineteen because it doesn't have the COVID numbers in it, one sixty-nine, nine eighty-seven.
Please continue.
Page fifty-two is what we call the CSBG, the Community Services Block Grant. We're estimating, again, an increase in entitlement by percentage. This one's quite a bit better entitlement. As you look at the department-level expenditures coming across, that's really Karen and her team moving dollars from program to program to use them in the best manner possible. Next is Comprehensive Energy Assistance Program, or CAAP. This one really is pretty flat, a slight increase in our entitlement dollars, but this one's a bigger pot of money that we have available to assist. Coming on down through there, you've got the totals carried across, the extra money that's in total revenue sources, and then really coming back down more to the normal programming.
Mr. Atkinson, I thought in CAAP, we had some cares dollars also.
I think you're seeing it in that total revenue source line item that's four up from the bottom. Is that correct, Blue? I don't know why it's not delineated at the top. You see the historical would be about five point nine, and then it jumps to ten point one.
Yes, sir.
I think that's where it is. We may need to bring you a new sheet on this one as well.
I think we've done it on the other ones. It'd probably be nice to call it out.
Absolutely.
Okay.
So next would be your Gateway Fund. And again, stop me with any questions. So we've moved to page fifty-four. You've got your current year forecasted budget. Just a quick reminder, transfer from general fund franchise fees, that is the sole source of income for Gateway. Gateway's a great program the city put into place many years ago. It is primarily used to fund new roads or road expansions. It has not historically been used on the maintenance side, although that is certainly within the control of the council. We did fund two Gateway projects in the current year, in the FY twenty year. And just as we brought to council a year ago, that doesn't give us any carrying capacity for twenty-one. It'll pick back up in the future. So we have a small cash-funded capital project proposed in the FY twenty-one. At the bottom, you've got your fund balance. The reserve fund requirements are pegged basically at your debt service. It's how we're balancing that. We are proposing in twenty-one to take that one hundred percent of debt service equals fund reserve requirements down to seventy-five percent. Down to seventy-five percent. We need to stay relatively close to the total amount of that debt service, and a lot of that's because of the legislative changes that are starting to wiggle those revenues that we built this budget, having three years of history on that. But I am comfortable to tell you a hundred percent of your franchise fees are not going away. Some portion may, but you're not going to lose a hundred. So I think dropping that reserve fund from a hundred percent debt service to seventy-five percent debt service is going to let your model catch back up a little quicker and get you to the point where we can do some projects. Still going to be slow, but it'll be a little faster.
Any questions on Gateway Fund? Yeah, we'll have a further discussion about it, yeah. Okay. Let's go to, just, I know there's just a real, a tiny little bit of cash that, or Gateway capital, I guess, on the next page.
That's correct. One project, it's Upland Ninety-Eighth to a Hundred and Fourteenth, and that is some design money really in there. We're projecting to come back and pick that project up in the following year for some construction dollars.
Okay, let's move to hot tax on page eighty. Excuse me. I hit, I hit the wrong button. I went back to, y'all don't want to go back to, look, y'all want to go back to book one, do you?
Not today, sir.
Okay. Hot tax on page fifty-six.
So let's look at the highlights first, then we'll move over and look at that pie chart. So let's look at the highlights first, then we'll move over and look at that pie chart. Most of this, we've already said. We know that the travel and tourism industry's been very hard-hit. All the projections we see show that this sector taking longer to come back than what we've seen in some of the others. We watch the airport numbers daily. We're still hovering in that 55 to 62-ish percent down. We recovered to that level relatively quickly, but it's held flat now for about four weeks, so it's not moving above that. So the FY '21 budget really is built to respect that. So let's go over to the pie chart. And the pie chart is how we use those dollars. So these are the division of the dollars. And you see the largest piece goes to the Convention and Tourism Bureau, that is Visit Lubbock. You see the small part that goes to Civic Lubbock, Inc., about 6%, and that's the grants program that's funded out of HOT. Visiting participatory and spectator sports is a big fancy word for the Lubbock Sports Authority, so also in Mr. Osborne's house. Transfer to the TIF for the Conference Center, that is that piece of the Overton Hotel that was set up on this funding model originally. You've got the Buddy and Maria Elena Holly debt for the Plaza, 2%, and that debt is rapidly coming down. And then Civic Center Operations and Marketing. So down on the bottom, you see how those expenditures get divided out. The pie chart, the pie is not changing. The pie just got smaller. So going back into the FY '19, we're down from the 7.7 to an estimated 5.6. And that pretty much tells the story of that one.
Okay, let's go to the Business Park, TIF.
Business Park, TIF, again on the 1920 column. If you go down towards the bottom, you have the cash-funded capital projects. Those represent those road projects that Mr. Osborne talked about. That's current year. Those are not picking back up going into the future year. So what you're seeing there is your total tax collections, your interest earnings is your revenue. And you see that TIF returning back to its kind of maintenance model, where they begin to accumulate these dollars, they accumulate the ability to bond if necessary. And basically, we'll have an excess revenue of $685,000 in that fund.
Okay, North and East Lubbock Neighborhood Infrastructure Fund?
Yes, sir. The budget highlights on this one are pretty interesting. Basically, well, gas royalties are well below recent averages, most especially when you start looking at the gas revenues. So we've changed this to bring those funds, those revenues come to the general fund, and then we transfer out to NELAF, this program, and at the time, the TIF, the proposed budgets, the first year where they're not sharing those revenues. We did the wind-down to the CBD TIF, and it's not in there anymore. These, again, are used for revitalization projects. Our focus through this program has always been to see if we can work on owner-occupied housing that may not qualify for some of the CD dollars and make those necessary improvements to allow people to remain in their homes. It's been a very successful program. Ms. Murphy and her team moved through this with great speed. We had a slowdown this year. We obviously entered a phase where we couldn't go into people's houses. They didn't want us there, we didn't think it was safe to be there, but that did pick back up. So 100% of the revenues to the fund do propose that we make that available dollars split, allocate half to one, half to District 2. Once we run through applications, if one has not used that allocation, the funds will move over to the other district. Questions on North and East Lubbock Neighborhood?
North Overton, please.
North Overton, TIF, slide 59 is your overall model. You see on the top, a very slight increase in funding, coming down to the bottom on the expenditures. They're up slightly, but they're mainly up because of an additional $300,000 transfer into capital. Moving down, get to the bottom where you've got your excess reserves. You see that even after holding out for debt service, this TIF is moving to a cash model. It's working and working well. The next page is the Conference Center Debt. So you can see, we started in 2015 with the $11.8 million remaining fund balance on there, the remaining principal and interest balance. And at the bottom, you've got your schedule to pay that off. Go to the capital sheet, next page. $600,000 that you saw from two slides ago. Coming forward is the North Overton, TIF, Street Upgrade and Replacement Project, and again, cash. Mayor and council, that is the last slide in Volume 3.
All right, y'all ready to start on Volume 4? Okay, let's pause for a minute and, any questions that have come out of today? Did y'all make any notes on any questions from today?
I have a note to come back to council ideally at the 1st of March with the status report on where we are with street maintenance and the dirt road residential program. From yesterday, there are two data sets that I still owe you. They actually handed them to Blue and I as we walked in today. We're going to take a look at them in the morning and get those out. One of those are the IT charges by department by time, and the other is the insurance charges by department by time.
Let's also add just, and I think we probably would do it as a matter of course anyway, but let's make sure we do a Gateway Streets Fund Work Session sooner rather than later. Maybe even, maybe even prior to, it'd be hard to do it, but maybe prior to council's priorities planning meeting. Just, I think it'd be interesting for us to look at that. I think there's probably some questions about, you know, what the decision process has been around what the projects are set to go next. And as you guys indicated today, there's quite a bit of flexibility in how those dollars can be used. And, you know, we, I think we sort of, we thought that maybe we would be looking at a bond election in a much sooner timeframe than we are possibly now. And it may give us, it may change our perspective on a couple of things. So, anyway, I've had a couple of members ask me to make sure we get that teed up, so.
We could set that late September, first in October, probably first in October. I think late September, we're going to have CAAP.
And the data, we have the data. It's not like it's going to take much to do it. It would be good to have some history. I think people, it's always wise to remember why we did it to start with and maybe evaluate if it's something that's still viable. Okay? What else, council? Okay, Mr. Atkinson, would you go back to the, to Presentation 1, and let's look at our timeline again, if you would, please, sir? Can y'all pull that up without any, without a whole lot of problem?
I think we can. Page 2. No, I don't think that's, Mayor, are we, we're looking to talk about the actions that are in front of the council over the next few meetings?
It may, it may actually be in the, in Volume, is it in Volume 1?
I think it's in the book.
You may just call it out since we don't have the slide for it. I think it'd be worth just reminding everybody what our, what our plan is, okay?
So, Mayor and council, next Tuesday, your regularly scheduled first meeting in August, August 11th, is your first official action on the budget. That action will be on the regular agenda, and it is a resolution to vote on the proposed tax rate. This is what we used to call your "not to exceed", so if you remember that from prior years. That resolution will come to you on the same basis upon which we have prepared this budget. So the new structure allows you to say, well, staff brought in a 1.64 penny reduction, but let's go ahead and push it up to the 3.5% and then we'll take a lower one later. We intend to bring to you the number that built this budget, nothing else. You are not adopting the tax rate at that, at that point. You are setting yourself, though, in a position that you will not come back and increase it over that number. So we're kind of building the box in which we will work, okay? There is not a council action on August 25th, your second meeting. SB 2 did simplify the process, it shortens the process for adoption if we stay under that 3.5% rate. And of course, we are, we are under that 3.5%.
We will post it, though, for both of those meetings in Work Session.
That is correct. It will remain, the budget items will remain on Work Session for you to ask us any questions, for us to report back with anything that we have adjusted or changed or anything. But you will not take a formal action on the 25th. We do have a called meeting on September 2nd, 5:00 p.m. September 2nd, 5:00 p.m. This is where you do your hearings. Because we're under the 3.5, you only have to do one hearing on the budget, one hearing on the tax rate. You will have both of those, they will be separate hearings.
But they'll be on the same night?
They will be on the same night. Following the conclusion of those public hearings, and in any debate changes that the council may have, you will then consider, on first reading, the budget, followed by the tax rate. Those go through. September 8 is your first regularly scheduled meeting. You will take the second vote on the budget, and then you'll ratify it. You'll take the second vote on the tax rate, and I think we've got that backwards. The ratification's on the tax rate, isn't that correct, Mr. Weaver? We vote on the tax rate twice. Yeah. We'll clean that up. So you'll vote on the budget, second read, you're done. You'll vote on the tax rate, second read. Then you'll turn right around and ratify your vote on the tax rate. You'll also vote on the hotel occupancy tax resolution that night. As it relates to the city budget, you are then complete. Your FY '21 budget will be adopted, can be adopted, by September 8th.
Okay.
We'll get this out to everybody as well.
Thank you. I mean, that's our plan, but there's always an option to make changes to that. We've set ourselves in a position where if we needed to, we'll have the bulk of September to work more if we need to for some reason. And if we, if something were to change from a federal standpoint, it would give us a little, the chance to pivot on something like that also. Okay, council, anything else? Well, I, I want to just close by, as we began, by thanking our leadership, our city leadership from Mr. Atkinson, Mr. Kostlich, and all of you that run important business units that, or the businesses you run that are important to our city. We're thankful for you and your work on this budget. You know, this is not the kind of budget that, budget year that we'll probably brag about. It's a tough one in a lot of ways, and you probably see that even from the council and the kind of questions we have. I think you find a year where there's more revenue, there's a lot more discussion about where it could be invested. It's not one of the situations we find ourselves in this year. And everybody, I think, is sharing a bit in the, the impact of that. So it's not, that's not lost on the seven of us. So we're thankful for you and for what you do every day. We're thankful for citizens. Mr. Atkinson and I just got an email from a citizen who has been, was watching tonight and had a couple of questions on, based upon things he saw about Lake Allen Henry. He had a suggestion for us, so it sounds like he's been down there like Mr. Mastin has been, part of the team down there. We will reconvene in a regular meeting next Tuesday evening. Until that time, we wish all of you a very, a good rest of this week and weekend. It is 5:47. It's a great day in Lubbock, Texas. The Lubbock City Council is adjourned.